We start with recognition.
Start with recognition, beautiful art.
We have a full house, which is very nice to see. Hello, Mr. Watson.
Sorry, I was one minute early.
So this is, this is a cool night for us as we head down kind of the home stretch of the school year. And it's a tradition that's been in Simsberry for many, many years. A chance to celebrate the wonderful artwork of our students. And the tradition has been, amongst other things, we have some individual awards I know that Shannon's gonna go through. But the framed artwork in the room sits in the board for two years. So what we like to do is bring these talented artists out that span all the way from lower grades in elementary school all the way through high school. Honor their artwork, give them a chance to tell us a little bit about each piece, no pressure, but a little bit of a chance to talk about your art. Receive a certificate and a pin from the board members. But we haven't had a chance to do this in three years, actually, in the way the rotation has been, which is pretty incredible to think about. So I think it's one of the unique things about our board office space. Rooms when you come up is it's really decorated with our wonderful artwork of our students that they change month to month, and then the framing stays for two years, so.
Come on in, yeah.
Come on in, don't worry about it.
Make yourselves at home, sorry.
It's fine, it's fine.
It's tight, but we're really happy to have y'all here. So please make, make yourselves comfortable.
And we're fortunate enough tonight to have our very talented Shannon Gagnier with us, our K-12 Director of Arts, our department supervisor. So welcome, and I know you're gonna kind of run us through the order of operations tonight. And I think the first thing we have up are our CAS award recipients.
Yes, well, welcome everybody, it's so nice to see you. I'm gonna go ahead, it's great to be here. I have the privilege of celebrating two students who were recognized for the Connecticut Association of Schools for Visual and Performing Arts. So I'm gonna start with Paulina. Can we just, can you stand up? Paulina, and then off, right there. And I wanted to say, um, from the visual arts department, uh, Paulina.
Excuse me, Shannon?
Yes.
Do you wanna grab the mic there so S.T. can accept what you're saying? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Paulina was chosen by the art teachers as this year's CAS awards recipient because of their outstanding commitment to the arts and the art department. They are always eager to volunteer their time and talents. Paulina shares their creative experience with peers and helps the art teachers with any and all studio duties. As an active member of the mural club, the hallways at Simsberry High School are filled with paintings that Paulina has created independently and through collaboration. Next year, Paulina plans to attend the Hartford Art School at the University of Hartford. So congratulations, Paulina. And next for Performing Arts, we have Alex Vargas. So you stand up, Alex. Alex was chosen by the music department as the performing arts recipient of the CAS award because of his humility, leadership, inclusiveness of others, and kindness throughout the past four years. Alex has been a member of Simsberry Singers, Connecticut Northern Regional Festival, Gospel Choir, Theater, Triumph Society, Director of One Acts, as well as this year's Lead in Pippin. Alex plans to attend Fordham University in the fall. Congratulations.
Follow up.
So talented.
Congratulations. Slide show?
Okay, slideshow.
All right.
So next, um, we have another celebration from students grade seven through 12 who competed in a state competition in the visual arts and were recognized for a variety of media and process. So we have digital art images, we also have still life, so drawing from observation. We also have digital, more digital art and media, and you can see the awards.
It's on the wall.
And there's, there's the printed piece that's up there, so you can, which was a gold key. Rebecca Poole, this is a silver key for this image. And her whole portfolio was accepted as well, and a Hartford Art School scholarship. As well as a gold key photography piece, and this was Best in Show, so it was the, the top photograph in the CAA presentation. And then we're at the middle school. And we have printmaking processes. And this sculpture, which was, was noted as the best sculpture in the show and awarded a special recognition. We have digital film and animation. And this is a special note, because we just found this out, but Jayden did win a national silver award, so his work went on to compete at the national level. And he was recognized and was awarded $200 and will be celebrated this summer in New York City. So that was a really big fabulous recognition. And I wanted to just make sure that everybody knows that they're invited and welcome to the art show. We have Central Schools opening tomorrow evening. We have Henry James Mills School next week, where you can see some of that fabulous work in person. And then May 24th, 25th, and 26th, you can visit Simsberry High School and see the exhibition at there. So, and all this information is posted on our website. So thank you, and congratulations to all the recipients of their awards.
Congratulations. Great job by the whole art team, too. Great inspiration.
Yeah, and so I, I wanted to take the opportunity just to share something that is a new feature that will be at the art show. Actually, if you look over at this piece over here, Grace Wallenberg, who is standing with that. Congratulations, Grace. There's a little QR code that's attached. And if you scan your phone, it will pop up, and you can hear a really wonderful presentation of her artistic process and the benefits of art and her learning that are deep within her process. And then you have the product. So we have asked our seniors, this year, for their senior showcases to document their learning process through digital portfolios and a narrated presentation, a commentary that accompanies that, so that you can listen to their process aligned with Studio Habit's reminder for the artistic process connected to the vision of the graduate, which is our goal for students accomplishing these attributes as they graduate Simsberry High School. And Alex just finished his AP exam last Friday. And so I have been working with him as a student consultant to give feedback and ideas to help bring this to life. And he's done it so beautifully, amidst taking, I think, about five other AP classes and tests this week. So he's going to share his presentation right now live. But if you come to the art show, you can view, I think we have 25 senior showcases that you can connect to, see their process, understand how the vision of the graduate is living in the art department, and see kind of their, you know, grit and endurance through the process while enjoying the final pieces exhibit. And it's really fabulous work. So thank you, Alex, for presenting this. I'm going to give you the picture.
Thank you. All right, so I'm Alex. As Ms. Gagnier was saying, I finished my AP portfolio, which was a sustained investigation that happened all throughout the year this year. And we thought it would be valuable to share today because it does fit very closely with the vision of the graduate values that the school has adopted. So you'll see that the presentation is divided into two sections. One is sustained investigation and one is final works. And the college board actually weights sustained investigation higher in the scoring of the portfolio, which makes a lot of sense because especially with the vision of the graduate, process and investigation is valued a lot more than the final work, especially in like math and science classes today. The emphasis is a lot less on what was the final answer and did you get that correct? People are looking a lot more at the process and how you got there. Do you want me to just go sit over there? Oh, there we go, okay. Oh, thank you.
Teamwork.
All right, so the first section in the vision of the graduate is the being a critical thinker. And so every AP portfolio starts with an in-depth inquiry of a certain topic and a set of guiding questions. So mine are up there, my topic or my guiding questions this year were, "In what ways are Earth's creatures affected by mutations? How do humans manipulate and edit the natural world? And how are organic beings converted into unnatural forms for the sake of civilization's progress?" So all of these questions are formulated and designed to solve real-life problems using art as a means of doing so. And in my case, this inquiry relates directly to my concern for the environment and artificial genetic engineering. So for example, this shows processed photos, and that's the final photo of the work. So my intention with this piece was to kind of draw attention to society's kind of fascination with animal mutations. And so I created a two-headed snake out of clay and submerged it in resin to look like a formaldehyde jar. And you'll notice that next to each of these in the portfolio, there's a little blurb that describes the students' ideas, materials, and processes. And that fits closely with the communicator value in the vision of the graduate because it allows a student to show their ideas clearly and concisely to the college board, because you really don't get a lot of space there. So you both need to show your ideas through that writing and a lot more through your work as well. This is another piece I did showing genetically modified organisms. And so I created flowers and leaves out of metal wire and submerged them in soil to kind of create like an ironic look of like how we're making like artificial things out of the environment, which shouldn't really be done, in my opinion. So, well, basically the theme of this portfolio is that artificial genetic mutation is kind of a no-no, but. This is another one, basically showing the growth of cancer cells and mutation in that sense. But you'll see that again in the final works as well. This one was one of my favorites. Basically, this kind of shows a lot of the collaboration values of the vision of the graduate as well, because I asked a bunch of my classmates to bring in all of their old stuffed animals that they didn't want anymore. And I tore them up and created a, basically a new stuffed animal using disassembled pieces. And so that one was meant to touch on the, uh, the act of putting together different animal genomes and things like that. So another, the biggest, I mean, I think the most important value here is being an innovator. And this was one of the pieces that took me the longest this year because really what the college board is looking for and what Capstone is looking for is an in-depth sustained investigation. This one took me about two months to do because it was, there were just so many steps. So that was actually my initial sketch on the left. And you can see that the final photo on the right looks absolutely nothing like that because through experimentation and trial and error, things change a lot along the way. So to this, this is more valuable than just the final picture. That was the final in the end. Again, more draping and different sewing techniques went into that to try to figure out how I could convey the message of pollution as well as possible, going from a green to white and gray and then a black gradient, showing the effects of pollution and how that causes mutation within an organism. And then lastly, basically, all of those ideas culminated into this, these two last projects. Although they may not look very similar to the rest of the portfolio, it kind of shows that higher-level conclusion after the sustained investigation. So my final process was showing through using industrial materials like wire and paracord, but creating organic flowy shapes. That could show how the human race is infiltrating the natural world. So basically, this shows a progression from rudimentary ideas to the most advanced ideas in your portfolio. And so for that reason, there's a lot more images that go into that that you sent to the college board than the actual final works. And then the next five slides, these are works that you saw before, but those are the final portfolio pieces that I sent to the college board. And so again, like Ms. Gagnier said, you can actually come to see that in an in-person exhibit at the Simsberry High School Art Show, which is May 24th to the 26th.
Thank you very much, that was really good. Really great, it's really fun.
Alex, any idea what the major is gonna be next year?
Um, the major is going to be Environmental Sciences, but I'll definitely try to keep up art while I'm there. But yeah, I mean, I think this is a good way of showing that, like, your actual interests and intensive area of study can be shown through art, no matter what it is, because my major very much isn't related to that at all, but I still was able to kind of incorporate that.
Thank you for all your contributions this year.
And you're headed to Princeton next year, correct?
Yes.
Very exciting.
Thank you very much. Thanks for sitting with us, that's wonderful.
It was great.
Very educational. That was wonderful.
Outstanding work. He's also serving as National Art Honors Society President and has been integral to that leadership in our programming, so, so great. And so now we'll be introducing the, uh, the framed work. And we'll be able to see from our kindergarten to, to our seniors what you're building up to.
This is always the funnest day, we all love it.
Yeah.
Sitting here being able to interact and see these talented kids.
Great, well, and thank you so much for, um, for supporting this and showcasing the work and celebrating the effort and talent of all of our students. So we have, I think each of you have your.
Yeah, the first person I.
I'm starting.
Lydia has someone that she'd like to.
Where is she, you want to hear?
I am.
Avery.
Avery Payson.
Daisy.
Yeah.
Where are you, Miss Avery?
Avery here?
Where's Avery?
All right.
Avery.
Where's your artwork, Avery?
Where's your artwork?
Show our paintings.
Got it. Oh, I was such a quick learner. Okay. Avery. So I am so delighted to bring the first one, to present the first student with this great honor. So Avery, how old are you? Seven, and what grade are you in? First grade, and where do you go to school?
Who's your art teacher, Avery?
Nice girl.
Nice.
Great, I do. So Avery, why don't you tell us a little bit about your work up here? I know it's high, can you see it up here? Sure, why don't you, can you tell us a little bit about that? Hold on. Let me hold this, okay? So you can talk into the microphone and you can tell us a little bit about your inspiration of what you did here.
I made this because I always like going to the park sometimes and bringing my dog. And I like playing with my brother outside sometimes. And I like playing fetch with my dog.
Well, that is great, Avery, and do you want to read on here, you want to read about this? Okay, Avery wrote, this is, I don't know if you can see it back here, but anyway, this is Avery and his family. What's your dog's name?
Oso.
Oso. So Avery wrote, "This is my family. I drew my dog, Oso, my mom, my dad, myself, and my brother Ava." "My family is special because we are different from anyone else. We make our own unique wooden toys." Well, wow, that is very special, and that is very unique. So Avery, what's your special toy you made?
I made a ring last year for my cousin, well, oh, a long time ago.
That's great, that's wonderful. Well, congratulations, Avery. So this is for you, and do you want to read it for anyone? Okay, hold it.
I don't want it to get readed.
For you. It says, "Simsberry Public Schools Art Achievement Award. This honor is presented to Avery Payson in recognition of outstanding visual achievement in visual art, May 10, 2022." And it's signed by Mrs. Selena, Chairman of the Board and Simsberry Art Department. Congratulations again, Avery. Do you have a special place to put your award? Do you have a special place to put your award, in your home, in your bed, this award?
Probably in my bedroom.
Oh, wonderful. Avery, before you go, where's your mom and dad, where's your family, are they here? There's dad.
My mom had to go to soccer practice.
It happens.
Good, well, thank you, Avery, very much. And I have one special thing for you here. This is a very special pin, and only the students who have their artwork hanging here get this pin. And I think you have a very special piece of clothing to put it on, right? There you go. Congratulations, Avery.
If you guys want to come in, you don't want to hold you back there.
Come on in, we have a seat here, we have a seat here.
The next child coming up will be Madeline Griggs. She knows where she is. She's here, we'll meet you.
It's here.
Madeline, if you could go to your painting, that would be wonderful, or your piece of art. That would be great, and you'll meet.
I know, we're never gonna get out.
You have the two pieces on the other.
Two pieces in the back.
Well, I'll get it, sorry, yes.
We're gonna make it. Hi, how are you?
She's trying to get by me.
First tell us you're Madeline Griggs.
Oh, that is yours? That's beautiful, wow. So what was your inspiration?
Just like, I got a scenery visual in my brain.
That's amazing, congratulations, that's great. And you're in 10th grade?
Yes.
And this is your certificate and your pin. And thank you so much for.
Luke, is Luke here, Luke for. Oh, good. That's okay.
Just not to come up, do you know where this work is?
It's right over there.
Oh, is that, that is his beautiful work. I will come over to him and just give to mom and say, "Mom, he did a great job, thank you so much." And a special pin just for him. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nice job. Elaine Rafi?
That's me.
Is Elaine here? Oh, great, where's your piece of art, Elaine?
Do you want to go back and show us? All right, Elaine, why don't you tell us what we have here? Wow, look at that.
Ryan, give her the mic.
Yeah, okay, so here, you want to, you want to tell us what you did there? You don't have to. No, that's okay. It's beautiful, though. What grade are you in, Elaine? Third grade, and you're at which school? Tooten Hills, well, that's a terrific, terrific job. So let's give you this award here and your pin, and thank you so much for coming out. Say hi to your brother.
Are your parents here?
Yeah, they're right.
Nice. Well, congratulations to everybody. Brielle? Brielle and Stella? Great. Brielle, where's your painting?
Where's your painting?
I think it's over in this corner.
Is that it, in the middle? Yeah? You want to go stand by me? No, you want to stand right here? Can you tell me about it? What is, what is it? Want to tell me the colors of these, so everybody in the audience will know which one is yours?
Why don't we walk over and just look at it, come on.
They're proud of you. Did it really get you?
Yeah, that's okay. You guys point at it, that's okay. It looks beautiful from here, for sure.
Is it the one in the middle? In the middle?
That's the one in the middle, right?
Yes, so everyone, it's the one in the middle, okay? You want to clap for Brielle? What school you go to?
Central School.
You go to Central School, what grade are you in?
Um, kindergarten.
Oh, wow, you like it?
Yeah.
Okay, guess what, I have something for you. This is for you, for your beautiful artwork, and guess what else? A pin that only you have, no one else is having your grade, okay?
What'd you say?
So that means just, you're welcome.
Grace Wallenberg? Come on up, show us your painting, and Todd will be, Mr.?
I'm gonna meet you around, because I gotta get close, this is my favorite, like, every two years. So, here's the certificate. So tell us about your, your piece, I love this.
Thank you. Um, this piece was really about me letting go and kind of not worrying about the end result, rather, um, just enjoying the process and trying something new. Just really just doing whatever I want with the paint.
Any particular inspiration, any artists that you, that you liked, that you were kind of thinking of?
Not in particular, I just kind of let the layers build and I kind of just added to it really based on what I was feeling.
I was thinking about this yesterday when I was reading the news. They set a record for the, an American artist at auction, $195 million, and I think that this is the next one. Congratulations, thank you.
Emily? Um, where's your picture, is it over here, come on, show me. Oh, wow. So tell us a little bit about your, here you go, here's your certificate.
Thank you.
Um, and where are you at school?
I go to Henry James.
Nice, and can you tell us a little bit about your beautiful print taking, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just put falcons on a tree, because I like falcons and I like, like, trees and I'm kind of gonna try both, so.
I love your color palette.
I had some, I had a lot of assistance from my art teacher, Madeline.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations, we're gonna really enjoy having it here, and here's a pin for you as well.
Thank you.
Benjamin? Benjamin Keller? Come on up, show me what you got. So Benjamin, tell me, what year are you, what grade are you?
I'm in eighth grade, Henry James.
Nice, here's your certificate. Now, you want, tell us a little bit about your, you can get closer if you want.
We had to pick an artist in our art class and combine their style of art with ours. So I did a self-portrait, and the artist I picked was Janetta Miller, and she uses a lot of fabrics, so I combined that with my self-portrait.
It's fascinating. Um, you play baseball?
Yeah.
I love it, well, I'm really happy to have you here, and thank you very much, and good luck on future art. I love the baseball. That's perfect. I think that's it, is everyone? Um, again, thank you very much to all of you for coming out. Thank you so much for all these talented kids, and I just hope they keep enjoying art and trying new things and layering it up, because I think that that's where you learn a lot more than you expect to. And I appreciate our art teachers and all of them throughout the district who have inspired these, these students and many, many others that were not able to have their artwork here. But we really appreciate it, and we hope to get out to all the shows.
Wonderful, hope you'll have a chance to talk about the attributes of the vision of the graduate, and I think the art's represented so well, so. Thank you for all you're doing as well.
Thank you, congratulations.
We are moving on to the rest of our meat of our meeting, and if you'd like to leave, we are not offended. If you'd like to stay, we are happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great, Alex, that was a really cool, cool, cool presentation.
Thank you.
I loved that you were so balanced, you got your arts and your sciences, it's really amazing. You're welcome, thank you very much, Shannon. So I would like to say, happy to be here. I'm sorry that Sue and Jeff are not here, but Sue is at her son's graduation, which is very, very exciting, and Jeff is out on work. But I will now open the floor to public audience. Please state your name, your address, and three minutes to speak. Oh, we need to give you a mic, too.
Or you can stand there, this right here.
Oh, there's one.
If you stand right here.
There's a mic in the ceiling, thank you very much.
My name is April Smith, I live at 44 Climax Road, Simsberry. We were already in a few months ago to talk about the CRT and got nowhere with that. They just, you know, kind of told us they're not teaching CRT. We then found out that they. We then found out that they actually are. They're kind of infiltrating it through the, um, air ducts between the math and the English and the everything, and we get nowhere talking about that. But my, the reason I'm here tonight is because I was told about several books that are genuinely pornographic, and I'm surprised that this school, that there isn't anyone at this school that doesn't put their foot down and say that this book should not be accessible to students. And that book is called Gender Queer, and you can, uh, Google the illustrations and see what I'm talking about. I've never seen anything like this before. And I, I feel that kids are naturally confused when they're going through puberty, and I don't want the school system to add to this or to be guiding them down a road that they maybe never would have done before. The parents should be having this discussion. Uh, these are very personal discussions. The school shouldn't have anything to do with this. And I just, whose idea was it to bring this book into the school system? Gender Queer.
Thank you very much. We'll take your, um, your comments under advisement and look at, look into it. Anyone else have public audience? Name? Oh, name?
Uh, my name is Jennifer Wilson. I live at 23 Worcester Road. Um, I'm speaking tonight in regards to recent events at the high school. It's no doubt that the last two years have been hard for all stakeholders of the school system, administration, staff, students, and families. As a public school educator myself, I know it firsthand. With that, with that being said, it does not excuse away recent events that I feel are symptoms of a bigger problem. Throughout the year, there have been multiple conversations in the community regarding school safety at the high school specifically around fighting and sexual assaults. I know the frustration that legal limitations put on administrators and school staff, and I acknowledge that firsthand. With that being said, it does not let you off the hook. To me, these are symptoms of a bigger issue, and that is the school climate at Simsbury High. I know that as a response to the walkout a few weeks ago, Mr. Patrina set up times and space for discourse around specific student concerns, and I think that's a positive step moving forward. My concern is that it took a student walkout to make that happen. School climate is the most important element of a school. It doesn't matter what top 20 list we make as a system if the students do not feel supported and safe. During a board meeting earlier in the year, a parent was discussing a fight that took place at dismissal, and just last week, I saw another fight taking place at the exact same time of the day. In the video, there was one security guard who was radioing for help, to which another security guard eventually responded. During that time, the fight escalated greatly. My concern is that there was clearly a lack of adult support at this location and no administrative support that I could see on the video. My expectation as a parent is that as a team, you will look at the safety and school climate systems you have in place and revise them as is clearly needed. The team should include the administrative team at the high school, along with you, central office, the board of ed, Simsbury High School staff, and students, and families. All voices matter in these discussions. Each perspective holds value, a belief that I don't always feel as a parent at Simsbury High School. We have to push ourselves as a district to not be afraid to look at areas we need to improve. Thank you for your work with our children. I truly believe that we have the potential to be the best school district in Connecticut, but not if we continue to ignore what the children are telling us.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then, um, I'll start with community, with committee reports. Alex?
Yes, um, so we're in the second week of AP exams at the high school, um, which will be concluded on Friday. So we're in the home stretch, at least for seniors. Some special events have been announced at the high school. Um, there's an orchestra concert on May 19th, a chorus concert on May 26th, and as we mentioned before, the art show, the 24th to the 26th. And then seniors have some fun events coming up with the senior outing on the 17th and a physics field trip to Lake Compounds on the 20th.
A physics field trip?
Yes. Roller coasters. Um, at Henry James, uh, last week, they finished math aspect testing, and tomorrow they begin English and language arts testing. Um, also on the 17th, there will be a culture night, family potluck picnic, which will be one of the first opportunities for families to gather at the middle school in quite a long time. Um, at Central, just a quick reminder that the art show begins tomorrow and continues into Thursday. And then at Latimer, um, they've announced the return of the All Are Welcome Global Community Celebration on June 8th, so our Latimer Lane families can learn all about the many cultures and traditions within the community.
Thank you very much. Lydia?
Yes, hi. Um, so today I attended the, uh, the legislative wrap-up presented by CAVE. We do this every year. This is our first year of doing it in person. The past years have been, uh, been, been remote. But, um, it was a very busy, busy year this year. It was a short session that started in February and ended just last week. But just some highlights, um, the budget this year was really good news for, for public education, good news for CAVE, and good news for all our districts. So the budget bills, um, there were some key areas that, um, that I'm going to highlight that is going to be affecting us all in the coming year, the coming year after, and the year after that. So in the budget bill, it's adjusting the state budget for the biennium year ending June 23. So these are bills that concern provisions related to revenue, school construction, and other items to implement the state budget. Some of them are the Special Ed Access Cost Reimbursement Grant, which gets the increase this year of $15 million. The ECS, underfunded districts will be fully funded by, for year 28. And we have been waiting for that for, I don't know, Matt, how long? A whole entire lifetime?
I think it'll bring the district an additional, or the town, it goes up to the town, $90,000.
So, so for year 28 will be the, the big year, we hope by then. Uh, adult education will increase by $1 million, and the CHEF case settlement by $26.2 million. So as you know, that was a debated case. So that is the budget bill that went through for the districts within the state. Some of the other areas that, um, that I'm going to highlight are school construction grant, the indoor air quality. These are all bills and amendments that were passed through this year. So there was a lot of work done within the committees, within the legislature. Um, others that, uh, went for was the, um, Senate Bill 1. There were three bills adopted this year about mental health, and, and this was really kind of, uh, a very pivotal year because we do not get that many bills adopted, and especially this year for mental health. In the past two years, that we've been within COVID and remote, and then coming off and coming this year, uh, the legislators did pay attention to districts, to boards, to superintendents about some of these areas. So there's a lot of these bills that are concerned childhood mental and physical health services in school, and childhood means by pre-K up to, to, to age 22. There's new grant programs for social workers, counselors, and nurses, and a lot of these things will sound familiar to you and, and to my fellow board members, because these are things that we have talked about during budget, budget process, budget season, and you've also heard throughout the news. Um, some other bills that have come through are the, um, minority teacher recruitment programs, teacher certification review laws, career technical pathways, um, the remote learning in itself. It, with that means that the state now prohibits any kind of dual instruction with this remote learning bill that was passed. Another big area is the Teacher Shortage and Retention Task Force, and we're talking about teacher shortages in many, many areas. It used to be just in some of the key core areas. Now we are talking about a number of teacher shortages, um, for the districts, not only around the state, but around the country. Another, um, bill that was passed was the Asian American and Pacific Islander Studies, and this will be added to the curriculum and in the year 25, 26. Another area, we've been, the mental health and behavioral services for children is expanding the preschool. And this is something that we have been talking about for years within the state legislature about doing. We've talked about student athletes and mental health, pipeline for the Connecticut's future, um, a family coordinator, and recess. Recession was another area where the, um, they talk about in terms of discipline and forms of discipline, and, um, students, you know, participating in physical exercise during a, during a school day. Also, Mental Health Day is going to be designated starting next year. Um, the governor proclaimed May 26th is Mental Health Year, and it's about getting outside and play for children's mental health. Another, um, another bill that was passed was the Children's Needs Task Force, which I am a member of, which has never convened, and they're talking about recombining again. So I'm not holding my breath on that one. And the third is, again, the Act Concerning Children's Mental Health, and, um, we've talked about truancy. We talk about the Act Concerning Employment of School Social Workers, Peer-to-Peer, which is about SROs and mental health support programs, trauma coordinator, and, um, and a number of other things. And then, of course, there was the Act Concerning Remote Meetings under the, under Freedom of Information Act, and again, back on Behavioral Health Assessments. So, and the last final, at the last final hour was passed, was, um, the Act Concerning Assorted Revisions and Additions to Education Statutes. This was passed at 12, 11:45, the final night of the session, and that finally did pass. So this establishes a working group, which is overseen by CAVE, and there's, it's a catch-all, a catch-all act that talks about requiring noticing and training to be provided by paraprofessionals. Um, extends deadlines to January 21st for Special Ed Task Force. So there's a whole number of things in there. And the final was the, um, resolution approving the settlement agreement in CHEF. So that was signed by the governor, as I mentioned before, and, um, you know, this establishes the additional open choice pro slots to districts such as ours, if available, and provides protection to the several heart cared districts, um, that, uh, will be paying increased, um, fees to magnet schools. So it was a very busy session, even though it was a short, short session, but we're very thankful that in particular, these three areas that we've talked about in terms of mental health for students, for staff, for districts, and, and public education were really, um, you know, dealt with and passed.
Great, thank you. Todd? Sharon? Yeah, it's on. If it's green.
So, um, one of the things that I guess I wanted to talk about is, as a board member, um, you know, I've received a number of calls based on the things that have been going on, and I know that we've been talking a lot about mental health. But I think one of the things that I'd like to raise and suggest that we consider is a, um, climate and culture study, um, personally. I, because I think in all our talk about mental health and us bringing in additional, um, resources, what we're not doing is getting any input from the students. And so I think as board members, it's our responsibility to, you know, encourage that from a district standpoint, that we also hear from the students, and if that's a way for us to be able to do that, then I think it's something that we should consider. So.
Okay, awesome. Okay?
Uh, yeah, just to note that, um, last few weeks since April vacation have been exciting because it's really when our hiring season for next year kicks into gear. Um, we, we post our new positions in late March, sort of let the pools of candidates build up, and then our principals and supervisors, um, get to work. So we have already, um, in the past, uh, week and a half, two weeks, signed, uh, uh, half a dozen or maybe one more than that, new teachers to contracts for next year, and have a whole bunch lined up in the next few days. So really, um, seeing high-quality folks come through and, uh, uh, just been a, a great start to the, to the season. Um, especially you'll remember from our budget, uh, meetings that there were a number of positions in special education that needed to be filled, and, um, you're always sort of holding your breath a little bit right now, and we're finding good people out there and, um, and getting them signed. So, uh, it's nice to get back to that kind of work, uh, and, uh, really, I want to thank the principals and the supervisors who get it all going. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I attended, um, along with Mike Luzetti and, um, our representative for, from Arcadis, um, um, a project manager for Latimer Lane, Jack Buckus. We were at the Board of Selectmen meeting last night, um, to, to deal with, um, as you'll recall, when the, um, bid estimates came in, we ended up after some talk of being several million dollars over the threshold to go out to bid, we ended up at the end of, at the end of the, uh, reconciliation process, about $1.3 million over the original threshold. Um, and what the Board of Selectmen did last night was pass a resolution essentially that the town will, um, make good, uh, if, uh, the $1.3 million based on capital reserves or cash for capital if need be, um, in order to lose no momentum and allow our project to get to bid as soon as possible. So Tech Town, our architects are telling us, um, design drawings 100% complete by July 1st, and then that opens the, the ability to get out for the bid process. So thank you to the Board of Selectmen for their support last night. That was a, a key, um, a key vote for us to keep the momentum going.
That's great. Um, that's a lot going on. Glad we got good people coming.
And our next board meeting is at Latimer, where I think we'll get a little bit of an update on kind of what the phases of that project will look like. I think it'll give people a good handle on, on what's up next there.
Yeah, great, and I know I'm going to give you the floor, but I know that, um, to Sharon's point, we do have, we have, we have regular cultural, school climate and culture, um, studies. I don't know when the last time we did one was, because we did one, um, I want to say four years ago?
Yeah.
But we had, you don't forget, we've had like two years of not doing anything, so it is time, definitely time. We do them regularly, and I do think that it's, we also have a lot of focus groups with the students involved in them. So I think what I'm hearing from you is that we probably need to be able to make sure all students, more students have, feel like they can speak up, because we do have quite a few opportunities for students to involve and give their philosophies and give their input. But that would be a way for us to look at data. Well, it's always good to do, and it's important to do, and we do them on a regular basis, so, um, we will definitely look into when we did it last, I think, and do it again.
It, it, it was pre-COVID, so I could.
Yeah, it was pre-COVID, so it's time, and now we've had one year.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, and I appreciate the, the input from the public as well. I think one of the things we've talked about quite a bit with our administrative team is over the course of the past two years, so much of the communication has become push communication around protocols, procedures, safety, things we need to think about, that we do need to reengage in whole communication and just make conscious efforts at every level of how we reengage around culture and climate, how we reengage around different protocols and
Communications.
Input and communications in general, you know, so, um, I think they're timely comments, and I do, they come around, you know, certainly incidents that, that you bring up that we take certainly very seriously. Um, so I appreciate the input, and we will be, uh, coming back around to that for sure. So, thank you.
And every time we get students together, we always learn a lot of good stuff.
Very good information.
It's, it's always a positive. Do you have anything else to say?
I do not.
Well, let's get on with the rest of the meeting. Um, okay, so approval of minutes of April 26th?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Abstaining? Excellent, moving into the acceptance of a donation from Central School.
So I get to steal the thunder from Sue Lemke for once, uh, who normally gets to tell you about all the great gifts and generous generosity of our community. Sue happens to be, um, attending the Teacher of the Year Celebration with Christina Nornell tonight, so um, I'm sure they're having a fabulous time out at that. Um, and, uh, my, my job is to, um, have you look at these two gifts, which, um, by board policy are in excess of $1,500. Both of them are from PTOs and to support, um, Camp Jewel. We're not going overnight for Camp Jewel, but we are, um, doing Camp Jewel for the first time since 2019. Um, the, the decision was to, um, while it's typically been a grade five experience, this year it's going to be grade six, so that those kids get the experience, and then they're going to double back for, um, grade five next year and, and, uh, figure out a new cycle. So you can see that they hear that the first one is a donation from the Central School PTO, uh, in the amount of $2,500 to support the Camp True School, uh, Camp Jewel trip for Central School families. So the motion is there for your taking.
I'll just go ahead. Um, move at the proposed gift of $2,500 to Central School by the Central School Eric Fisher Organization. He uprooted. Mr. Jenner, a second?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Excellent, it's just so great. Our PTOs are so wonderful, and that Camp Jewel is so fun. It's such a great way to unify the kids and really give them a, do you remember going, Alex?
Did you go? It was very fun.
I was living in Simsbury.
Oh, right?
Like, what happened? How'd you miss it?
Is it, is it multiple days and just not an overnight, or just like one?
Yeah, it's two, two days is what they're going to do. Um, and not to be outdone, the Latimer Lane PTO, uh, raised $2,719 to donate for the Camp Jewel trip for that school community, so that motion is also in front of you.
I'll move. I'm just going to take it down. I'll move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who's moving it?
Oh, I'm, they're doing a, thank you.
Yes.
They're doing a, um, a picnic up to High Meadow and Granby, supporting that. Boy, I want...
You would have had that.
Yeah. We won't tell Sue what happened. But I would accept a motion. Sharon moves that. Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again for everything. That's wonderful. I hope all the kids have fun, no matter where they go. I would like to have a motion to amend the agenda to take our 2020 and 21 audit report and move it to our next meeting. Table it. Because the person making the presentation cannot be in attendance today, so.
I will move it.
To table it.
To table it.
I'll move table it.
All, second?
Second.
Sharon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. And then we're back to Neil.
Yeah, just one policy tonight, a little bit of a cleanup that, actually, something that we were doing as part of a contract review, and that we came across our alcohol and drug-free workplace, alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace policy. And it had a lot of language left related to marijuana and cannabis-related project materials that have changed, where the law has simply changed. So this is a personnel policy that, based on the change in state laws related to cannabis and marijuana, the language needed to change. I contacted Chipman and Goodwin to get the most updated policy. They sent it my way. Policy committee met about a week and a half ago to review it and forwarded on for the full board's consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Any discussion? I recognize a motion. Do we have to, or no?
No, no, no.
Because we have another...
First reading, we'll have another reading.
Second meeting, excellent. So if there are no questions...
Just enough time to get it passed for June.
Read it, and then we'll talk about it again next meeting. We are opening up for a second public audience. State your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Thank you very much.
Last time.
You're used to it.
I'm Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Oakers Road. So given how much I've had to say lately, it's not surprising that my comments have spurred a lot of conversations outside of these meetings. I actually feel like more gets discussed outside of this public forum than here at the meetings, but that's a whole other issue. A number of people have reached out to me to echo concerns that I've expressed. In response to curriculum concerns, just one example of messages I've received from one mom said about the book with the young girl who was assaulted. "My daughter was also disturbed by this book, and she has no history. She spoke to the teacher and told her she found it upsetting. The teacher agreed to let her stop reading if she wanted. I think the cutting part was particularly disturbing. Sometimes I feel like it's just my family feeling this way about some content and like we're the only ones ever asking for possible alternatives. It's reassuring to see we're not completely alone. This was absolutely not a parent who is politically conservative, and the parent is a teacher herself. This is not a left-right issue. This is a what is in the best interest of all of our children issue. I don't actually think most of us differ in our opinions here. Maybe a little bit on content, but I don't think we're in disagreement. I do want to say on the record that I did have a conversation with Susan Salina, the board chair, that I think was very productive and very thoughtful on both sides, and I hope that those conversations continue, not only with Susan and myself, but with other board members and myself, as well as other board members and the community at large. So I want to say that on the record because I have spoken to board members on various topics. I think the board and the administration cares very much about the exposure of our children to obscene and pornographic images, enough to have policies in place in writing that protect our students. Section 5133 of the Board of Ed policies addresses student discipline. In subsection 111, titled Actions Leading to Disciplinary Action, including Removal From Class, Suspension and/or Expulsion, item number three states, the use of obscene or profane language or gestures, the possession and/or display of obscenity or pornographic images, or the unauthorized or inappropriate possession and/or display of images, pictures, or photographs depicting nudity, is a prohibitive item that is possible to have disciplinary action. Section 5134 policy regarding student use of the district's computer systems and internet safety reads that the board will implement a technology protection measure to block or filter internet access to visual depictions that contain obscene material, contain child pornography, or are harmful to minors. I hear my buzzer, so I'm going to move on. There are several other sections of the board policy that say the same things about obscenity and pornographic material. So I would argue that we should be doing the same thing with regard to reading material that's contained within the school library. So I think adhering to policies that we already have, whether they have to do with digital material or print material, needs to be streamlined and consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public audience?
I just have questions that you probably can't answer them, though.
Wait, you are more than welcome to say and ask questions. And you can also, if you want to do them publicly, if you don't, you can always call the board tomorrow and ask questions. It's what your comfort level is, but we still need you to say your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Have at it.
My name's Karen Myers. I'm 42 Woodside Circle. My question regarding the climate survey that you're going to do, that's probably high school, middle school. I know elementary school, the kids aren't going to be able to do it, but do you also have the parents of the elementary school do it? Would they think about what the climate is there for their school?
We've done both, actually.
And we do it for the teachers, too.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
It depends which version and how comprehensive it is. And we still need to make those final decisions this year.
Yeah, but we've done elementary student...
We've done elementary.
Third and sixth grade, obviously, the questions are worded in such a way for a third grader to... You know, but we've done them in the past with elementary.
We remember all the ones for COVID, all the different...
Yeah.
Those are what I remember. But my other question is, I know the principal had sent out information about the walkout and the different things that they were doing. One of the things was reviewing the extracurricular, basically like what I call the sports conduct, right? And what you are doing and what you can and can't do when you sign that content. But again, it talks about hazing and bullying. It does not talk at all about sexual harassment or anything like that, which it should...
Social media.
Yeah, it does not have that on there at all. Yeah, it doesn't, which amazes me that it doesn't have social media on there. I mean, that's, it just, that I think needs to change. Does that change by you? I mean, by the board here? I mean, he was talking about changing the... That was really for the staff, right, for the marijuana, whatever. Just wondering how that gets changed. Does it have to go principal first, or the board here?
That's a piece of input that came from some parent feedback I received, as well as students when Mr. Patrina brought them together.
Because it's upsetting, I mean, as a parent.
Continuous improvement is always our philosophy. So any input we get from you guys and the public, and any input we get from each other, I mean, we're always trying to improve, and so that's all I can say about that.
Yeah, I think it's probably an oversight, right? Not having that change. It's probably been that way for years. Almost the last time it was revised, probably...
Well, some of the things, yeah.
Yeah.
We do have things like that.
Yeah, so it's just probably...
The input has been, we've gotten a lot of feedback in the last few weeks about certain things that we are not at liberty to talk about, but we are hearing everything that's being said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't think I was going to talk today.
We do regularly go through all of the policies on a loop and make sure that things are modern and, you know, up to date. And there's a lot of them. I mean, as Lori can probably tell you.
But online, that should have been, I don't know, I think that's been...
Yeah.
Social media should have been on there a long time ago, right? I'm sure there's people...
But if you, we can absolutely talk to you about certain policies and stuff, and you can look at them if you want to go more depth on that, but we're not going to do that here now. But we're happy to talk to you about that if you want to call in with a policy around because they are complicated and diverse. Any other public comments? Thank you very much. All right, that being said, I would accept a motion to go into executive session, discuss student matters. Thank you. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are, our meeting will be finished after that, but... You're welcome to say. You're welcome to say.
You do the online. Okay, see, I always go to Target, but I've never seen the clementine anywhere.
It's not a board policy.
Okay, that's why. Well, see, I go by.
But we'd have to look at it.
But I'm not saying...
Well, yeah.
You guys don't, no. You don't go to our...
Yeah, you can't go.
You don't go to our...
Right, that's what I thought.
Let's get to the bottom.
University of Hampshire.
Go enjoy it.
Thank you. I'm really excited.